So, good evening, everyone. My name's Jack Balendorf. I want to call the August 26th meeting of U46 School Board to order. Again, I'm Jack Balendorf, Chairman of the U46 School Board. And actually, we'll start on my far right, Bob, and we'll work our way around clockwise and introduce ourselves.
Technology Essex.
Eric Knox, School Board Member from Essex Junction.
Alvin Bardier, School Board Member.
Terry Baker, School Board Member, Town of Essex.
Jack Balendorf, from Essex Junction.
Judith De Nova, Superintendent.
Brian Dunn, School Board Member, from Essex Junction.
Robert, Principal of Essex High School.
Ryan McLaren, School Board Member, from Essex Town.
We start our meetings with the, I'll read the mission statements for both Essex High School and Center for Technology Essex. Essex High School is a mission-driven and learning-centered community that believes, through both independent and collaborative engagement, everyone can develop excellence in their individual pursuits. We offer a rigorous and varied curriculum and believe in challenging students to think critically and act responsibly, compassionately, and respectfully. We foster intellectual curiosity and resourcefulness so that students can engage in their learning to achieve behaviors, skills, and knowledge essential to become contributing members of their community and citizens of a diverse and ever-changing world. The Center for Technology Essex provides comprehensive technical programs for all students which include career exploration, preparation, and technical literacy in a respectful learning environment. Students will have the opportunity to acquire skills necessary to reach their individual goals. Thank you. Our agenda has, before I go into the visitors and staff to be heard this evening, I just want to reintroduce everyone here. This is Superintendent Judith De Nova's first meeting with us in her new job coming up this year, and we look forward to a productive year. And it's always a new time, you know, this time of school year, we're invigorated and ready to be engaged in all things school-related again. And as we finish up with the summer, it's nice to be back at school and working with you and your team on the challenges that face all of us.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, thank you. So, visitors to be heard. We have visitors this evening. Is there, please step forward to the microphone and introduce yourselves, and we look forward to hearing them.
Hi. My name is Tammy Charbonneau, and first of all, thank you for serving on the board. I know what a thankless job that it certainly can be, and as an educator in Burlington, I know the time and energy you put in, so thank you. I'm here as a resident. My family has owned property here in Essex Junction for almost 50 years, and if you look out the window, you can probably, when the trees, leaves aren't on the trees, you can see the commune that we have across the brook. And it's that property that I actually want to talk to you about tonight, because one of the things that we've done in the last, I don't know, three or four or five years, is we started leasing the property out front or allowing motorcycle classes to use this property, which first and foremost, let me say that I am a proponent of motorcycle safety. I'm a motorcyclist myself, so it's not the class that I have an issue with. I have an issue with its location to my property. The classes are offered on weekends. This summer, it seems like they were offered every weekend in June and every weekend in July, which means our property really isn't a nice, comfortable place to live. What I did was I took the opportunity to snap some pictures of the property we're talking about. You can kind of pass this around if you'd like. I have talked to Bruce Murdo before, and Judy and I have done correspondence, and this is the place she said I should come, so this is where I am. One of the things that was asked of me was, "Why don't your neighbors complain?", which is hence why I took the pictures. Our property on North Street is the only house that I know of that has taken full opportunity to develop its land into what I call a nice communal quiet place to be, right here in the middle of town. When the high school was built many, many years ago, my family took into account the fact that we were moving, or the high school was moving to our backyard. And if you look at the pictures, you'll see that there's been trevorries and trees put in, and the pool fence is a far distance away from the fence and the brook line. That's all done so that we can live peacefully and always have with what's happening up here in the high school. Unfortunately, the motorcycles are like living next to a go-kart race. Worse than that, my partner's here tonight because what she said she was going to do is to keep sitting here throughout the meeting and keep yelling, "Walter, Walter, Walter", because there was this one Saturday and Sunday class where Walter was not doing a very good job.
What, Vinny?
Oh, Vinny, I'm sorry, Vinny. Vinny was not doing a very good job, so the motorcycle instructors yelled to Vinny all afternoon, and it's not just all afternoon, it's two complete days. One of the arrangements we thought we had made was that the motorcycle classes not start before 10 o'clock on Sunday or 9 o'clock on Sunday. Well, the classes don't technically start before 9 o'clock, but the motorcyclists come to practice at 7 o'clock every day. It was held this year on Memorial Day weekend, so we moved a barbecue from our house because it's just like, it really seriously is listening to Nats and sitting next to a go-kart race all weekend long. We take full account of the activities that happen here in Essex, and we know that coming up on Monday is the Labor Day Tractor Pulls. Knowing that, we know that we're not going to be at our house here for exactly the same reason. So, we're fully aware of, you know, where we live and what's surrounding us, but some of the questions I've asked is, we have quite a big parking lot. Can it be moved over there? Can it go behind the building? Lawton's available, I don't know of anybody that that would bother over there. The fairgrounds over there. Basically, I was kind of asked to do the legwork to try and figure out where they could go, and I'm really not interested in doing that. I know that it's property that they must pay money for to use, and there's just got to be another place they can go. One of the things that I was told is that because of the requirements of the class, all of the, this is the only parking lot that could be used based on what they needed to be able to teach the class. Well, then maybe they need to reevaluate the class. That's a really big parking lot. They used to do it at Fannie Allen. Fannie Allen certainly isn't that big, and they utilized the whole thing. And, they're coming on Harleys. Some of them are taking this class in Harleys. That's just really, really bad. So, my request is that we find another place to put them. Why is no one else complaining? I don't really know that that's a relevant question, but it was asked, so the pictures tell you that we have made our backyard a sanctuary, and you can't spend a lot of time in your summer sanctuary in Vermont, and we haven't been able to do it for many, many weekends. We'd invite you over for a barbecue if you like, so you can kind of see what it's like to do all weekend, but we're asking your help in trying to figure this out. I don't have any other solutions. This is the third year that I've been dealing with this or asking questions through nobody's fault. The first year, I was talking with Bruce, and I'm not throwing anybody under any buses. Bruce and I chatted about it a lot, and then other more important things in life come up. My dad passed away, that was not as important, I mean, you know, the motorcycles take second. My partner had cancer last summer, that takes second precedence. Well, here we are in year three, and we couldn't enjoy our backyard again. So, help. Did you know that you guys have authority over that?
Right.
Yes, Tammy, thank you. Do we have any questions? Quickly?
How many motorcycles are there in this classroom?
It varies. There's at least six. Sometimes there's up to 12 or 15. There's not usually less than six.
And for the administration? I guess we authorize, but is this a volunteer group? Is this a school-sponsored event? What's the story?
It's not a school-sponsored event, so it extends beyond the school community's needs.
So, we do have authority over where they conduct the class?
Is that the Motorcycle Safety Foundation?
Yes. Really good class, yeah.
Well, it's not, it's a private company.
Right.
They're required to run, they're required to follow the Motorcycle Safety Foundation guidelines, but it's not the Motorcycle Safety Foundation. They run their course. This is a long conversation that I actually didn't mean to break up, so we, I mean, I don't need to ask a bunch of questions, because it's the only private motorcycle company that's giving courses in the whole state, and it's just, they basically, that grandfathered them. Because now all the courses are run through the DMV, which is why I noticed.
Oh, that's true.
So, yeah.
That's absolutely true. I get my research.
So, we can schedule for, you know.
Yes, so, so, just level set where everyone are. The public to be heard, as we, an issue has been raised, it's not really a time for discussion of this matter. I appreciate you coming in and taking your time this evening and making the board aware of this issue that's of concern to you, and it's time for this 4-2. We've got, our agenda will move on, but it's a topic for us to consider in our deliberations, and we will keep you informed, Tammy, through administration as to how these issues would rest.
Thank you for sharing the information, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for inviting me, Patricia.
Thank you.
Next, our principals' reports. Both our principals are here this evening. I have some Bob Travers from CPE and Mr. Robert from VHS, and gentlemen, I'm glad you're here, and I just, again, like I said to our superintendent, it's nice to be here at the beginning of the year. It's always renewed enthusiasm to be at school, and we're anxious to, and look forward to working with you and your teams on the challenges that we'll face this year, so, okay. Bob, we'll start off with you.
Okay. Yeah, lots of energy. A lot of work's been going on at the school, in the building, all summer long. I want to say, I haven't seen the building look this good in a while, and it always looks good, but it seems like the maintenance staff really worked pretty hard to get it to where it is right now. So, we're very appreciative of all their work, and just wanted to say that in front of the board. Following my report, under the area of safe and healthy, safe, healthy, and respectful learning environments, there's a few things I wanted to point out. This is the second year that we've been working on our faculty advisory groups. At the end of last year, the faculty advisory groups had formed, completed the creation of their action plans, and committed to launching those action plans this entire year. During the summer, we actually had a very effective and informative training for volunteer advisory group facilitators. All of the advisory groups are going to be facilitated by faculty or staff. We did that training with Mary Jane Shelley and Carolyn Dickinson. It focuses on appreciative inquiry facilitation skills. Just last week, on August 22nd, we committed one of, one full day of our in-service days to have each of the facilitators of the advisory groups work their, work their groups through planning their launch activities. Each one of the seven groups has a launch activity, and they're all focused on initiatives and tied to the action plan of the school. And then today, as another full day of in-service, we had 20 new CTE faculty members start a three-credit appreciative inquiry course with Mary Jane Shelley. That also included some members from other schools in the district. It was nice to have people from outside sitting in on the class. So, more to come on the success of the faculty advisory groups this year. Under student achievement, a couple of points I'd like to point out. The CTE pre-tech program is undergoing a program self-study this year. We're using a model that comes out of the Agency of Education in Missouri. The goal is to evaluate the integrated academic instruction so that they can identify a viable curriculum and make adjustments to their master calendar. If the, if the study is successful, we're considering using it for all programs in the tech center. Skills USA, I know you probably saw the emails, but I just want to highlight it again. 18 students competed in the national competition in Kansas City this past July. Of those 18 students, five of the competitors scored in the top 10, and two of the competitors scored in the top 20. Especially notable was we won a gold medal, which means that one of our students was the best in the nation in the category that she competed in. That was Clover Burke, she's a dental assisting student, and she was competing in customer service. We had an 18th place in cosmetology, a 14th place in pin design, a 6th place in 3D animation, a 6th place in customer service. We also had a 5th place in web design and a 5th place in dental assistant. So, that's, that's immediate feedback on the quality of the students and the success of the instruction that we have at the center. If you remember, they do a regional competition in the state of Vermont. If they win that competition, they go to Kansas City. 18 was the largest group we sent in a long time. Another feather in the cap for instructors and students is the Building Technology Residential Program sold its project house that they've been working on for two years. Typo, it's not 17 Taff Street, that's the one we sold two years ago, 16 Taff Street. It was on the market for two days, it sold for full asking price. I sat back and calculated, it was over 40 students who worked on that house for over 2,000 lab hours. One instructor committed 3,700 instructional hours in the building, and to give you a sense of our cycle, a week after we sold the house, we were going for approval on permits for the next house, because we only built these houses so that we could provide excellent instruction for the students. So, we are in the process of pulling permits for 19 Taff Street, and we will build that house over the next two years.
Bob?
Yes?
What did you work with to get the ask addressed? Was it a local realtor?
Well, that's a great point, I'm glad you asked, because we went with Lang, and they, very graciously, after we spoke with them, reduced the percentage on the sale because we're a nonprofit. So, that's the first time we've had that experience in a while, we'll certainly work with them again. We considered selling it ourselves, but in the end, the turnaround is just too quick from having to get the house sold while moving forward on the designing and construction plans for the next house. I didn't, we didn't have time to do it.
Yeah.
So, it was, it was Lang, and it was Karen Goldin, the person who helped sell the house, so.
So, it was with their consultation at the 3895?
That's right. We did a number of studies. We actually had a, we had a tour group come in from Lang of other realtors who were, who were selling houses in other markets and this market. They discussed the features of the house. Went through a two-step phase, because the house wasn't finished at first. We listed it for considerably less, and when the house was finished, we went back and did a change contract and listed it for the amount that more than five realtors agreed to. One saying slightly higher, a number were saying slightly lower, the median felt right. On that first two days, we actually had two offers. For public events over the next month, open house on September 19th, 6:30 to 8:30. I know we'll see a lot of the board members there. Communications, we are launching a quarterly newsletter this year. First one will be published on September 20th. It will be digital mostly. We'll be sending it home through an email blast, but we'll also be featuring it on our website. Superintendent De Nova's coming in to a joint faculty meeting in September to talk about Calendar 2.0. Something I'd like the board to know. Matt Gonzalez, you know the name, is a CTE graduate. He worked in computer animation web design. He was recently hired as a full-time staff member after the board approved the hire. Immediately, we felt the benefits of having Matt on staff full-time. He is very service-oriented, he works hard, and he's a clever person. He's doing some good work for the district, so I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the CTE for making his skills available to us.
Good, thank you, Bob. Do we have any questions for Bob on his director's report?
These are possible to include the board members on their newsletter distribution?
Yes. Yes. That newsletter's actually going to be part of the curriculum, computer animation web design and graphic design, or designing the elements of the, of the pages.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Bob, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, in the report, it said the re-accreditation letter was attached, and as you're reviewing it, it wasn't, so now I will give you a hard copy. Basically, to make a long story short, as you can read through it, there are deliverable dates, as they typically are with NIESK visits and reports, where we have to respond to the, you know, recommendations, so that's all included in there. We are re-accredited. I'd say that the one thing to note are the many commendations that are listed there. You'll see the recent initiatives that have been started within the last three years, three to four years. A lot of those are highlighted, so I felt very good about that, as we're continuing to improve. In terms of the attendance task team report, I think besides, which is included, is, you know, the difference in terms of unexcused cuts is an overall decrease between two years ago and last year of 59%. So, I think that speaks volumes of tightening it up for every aspect, student, parent, teacher, administrator, et cetera, et cetera. The process was thoroughly analyzed, and I think one of the, one of the highlights was being able to access the attendance taking by block to our email system, where if a student was marked absent, within a half hour, the parent would be getting an email. So, that does a couple of things. Kind of puts pressure on the student, also makes sure that there's accurate attendance at the beginning of each class, and if a person is showing up unexcused or cut from the administrator's perspective, they need to follow up in a timely manner within 48 hours. So, we saw a good movement there in terms of students being where they needed to be.
Did that result in additional interactions with parents as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, and it's, as you can imagine, it's appreciated communication, I guess, as an overall statement. As a matter of fact, it got, got to a point, some, some parents were appreciative, but some were getting annoyed, charging them for the school year if they're taking so many emails, and that was perhaps a family conversation that was going on. In terms of the advisory, we, this is a student advisory, I thought I would share with you, because this is one of the big NIESK recommendations in terms of best practices moving forward, this packet, which you will be receiving soon, is a statement of purpose and goals, and I guess what I would just ask the board to flip to is the back of page two, which says, "Advisory Plan and Activities Year One at a Glance." And basically, we're looking at quarter one, we are Essex High School. Critical question, what does it mean to be a member of the VHS community? Quarter two, making your way. Question, how can we use challenges to provide opportunities? Quarter three, embracing diversity. How does diversity enrich our lives? Quarter four, discovery. How does looking back push us forward? As a reminder, based on our student-focused forum in February, the students, in terms of a proposed advisory at the time, said they felt meeting once a week was critical, and also having the composition of the group beat mixed grades. So, the advisory I have has 12 students, and there are three per grade. We're meeting Wednesdays for a half hour every Wednesday. And there is a toolkit, which has been compiled. I'd like to give special mention to learning community leaders Karen Zabowski and Jen McKenzie, who have put a lot of time in this summer to make sure that there are plenty of items in the toolkit for teachers to access as we start with this new advisory opportunity as a way to get to, for the students to have another adult besides a school counselor to be an advocate for them during their four-year experience here. And the rest of the packet is more informational in nature, but I wanted you to be aware of how it's been specifically designed for this school year. In terms of other parts of the report, a couple of things. The summer math class, which we did not run this year, I think is something that as we, for the reasons I've listed in the, in the report, I think as we move towards a conversation on Calendar 2.0, with one of the main items in terms of a proponent for a calendar like Calendar 2.0, is to minimize the time off for students, to minimize regression of learning. And we have, we have pretty good communication mechanisms in terms of Essex Town, and obviously ADL in terms of identifying kids, but we use multiple measures, so it's not simply, it's not simply a kneecap test. It's that in addition to their performance at the local school level, and sometimes, and many times, the teachers and the principal will make the call that summer session may be in the student's best interest well after vacation plans have been made and recreational opportunities have signed up for, and there's an apparent conflict of that. Last year was a good example in the sense that the return on investment of the instruction with the students and their attendance and their ability to access the information was really not that good in terms of the time. If you recall, it was for Monday through Thursday for six weeks, going from 9 to 11:30, and the attendance was, like I said, we were having the students miss, because of realistic conflicts from a family perspective, missing two and three weeks of the six weeks. So, it's, it's very challenging to experience that. It's also very challenging to be the instructor in that situation, so that may be a conversation point of Calendar 2.0. In terms of the August 2nd tour that I gave the class of 1973, you may have seen the nice article they had in the Essex Reporter shortly after that, and there were about a dozen folks that showed up for the tour. And we started out at about 3 o'clock, a little after 3:10, and we finished at 4:30. And there was such genuine enthusiasm for some to be back the first time since they graduated. Two of the gentlemen were here, said they had driven by campus a couple of times since they graduated, and they were wondering what this phase was, stuck on at the end of the building, which of course, this wasn't here in '73. So, I think it was a wonderful opportunity to connect with graduates. It also brought back the point that some board members may recall when Jeff Colkin was chair, and that is the alumni outreach. I mean, I still think that that is just an untapped source of community pride, connection, and reverence. And I just, this is the time to talk about it, August, low-key, but I think that's, it's an opportunity that we could... it's an opportunity that we could perhaps access a little better. It was wonderful. One, one of the ladies said, oh, there's my locker. And I said, it's probably the original locker. And she laughed and she goes, boy, if I could only remember my connection, I'd see if it still worked. So there was, there was a lot of good conversation. One of the classmates mentioned, boy, I would love to connect with a teacher who made the biggest impact in my life. And I said, oh, who's that? And he said, Steve Ferrer. I said, well, the good news for you is I'm going to see him tomorrow at Dartmouth at four o'clock because it was the Shrine Game. We had coached it in eighty-eight and we were reuniting. So I took his contact information and gave it to Steve the next day. He was very touched now that he's been retired for four or five years. So once again, just an impromptu opportunity to do a tour and you get a lot of, a lot of solid takeaways. And finally, in terms of just being aware, we now are starting with about ten other schools in the state. We have, I checked with it yesterday, we have fifty-four kids signed up for volleyball as co-ed. We're the only state in the country not to offer volleyball as a sport. It's a two-year exhibition sport through the VPA. And right now, the initial response, when I was in the South New Little bit watching practices, you know, nothing but success. So you look at, you know, we're in a good place where we now have fifty-four kids who would, for all intent and purposes, be not doing anything after school. And now they're going to be playing volleyball right through the beginning of November. And it's just a wonderful thing to see. These kids are accessing a really, really healthy activity. And I'll keep you updated on that. Open house, September nineteenth, school report night from six to six-fifty. And then typical parents will follow their student schedule from seven to nine o'clock. I, I agree with Bob. He shared the sentiments. Not only was it extra clean, it seemed like they were ahead of schedule this year. And as we all know, the one campus, we added square footage and they really were all over it this year, the maintenance crew, custodial staff. So they should really be commended outstanding work. That's my report.
Thank you, Rob. Do we have any questions for Principal Ritter?
Yes, I will. I went through and I read your comments regarding researching a joint career center. Did you want to say anything about that?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. So, and I'd be curious to get your feedback on it as well. Mary Beth Pirelli is, you know, one of the learning community leaders with Life College Career. And we had the, the business faculty forum, Martin was a king day, and then the student focus forum in February. And we've met jointly with CTE throughout the year in terms of trying to get a EHS/CTE career center. And we've always talked about space, so we got all these tentacles converging at once. And she did as a project towards the end of her class in the spring, looking at the space we have and, you know, what could we do to make this happen? As, you know, and I think Ryan's alluded to twenty-twenty and, and other board members looking forward. But, you know, I thought it was a wonderful representation. She was a part of those, those student focus forums. And to take all the dialogue, the input, and to put forth a blueprint proposal like that is very impressive. And I know it very much is an intent, it's not just an Essex High School career center, but it would be a joint EHS/CTE career center. And, you know, I, I think where she's proposed it is, is very intriguing. Mrs. Rath is Amelia, so I don't know how, I don't know if you've had a chance to see it because you were, you were overseas back then. But it's a, to kind of redesign the guidance log to a certain degree and expand. And we don't have a, a student center, if you will, on campus. So that would kind of help meet that need as well. But I just, she presented to the design team right before graduation and we were just so impressed with her work. Not just more to come, but a general conversation of space and redesigning space and different purposes.
Right.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I, I did have two thoughts. One, I wanted to ask if the proposal had been vetted in terms of health and safety in an emergency or where there would need to be a very rapid exiting of the school?
Not yet. The fire marshal will have to weigh in on that, yes.
Okay. I, I think that's an important issue as whether or not the other doors on the opposite side would be closed and how they might be opened in an emergency. I'll tell you, I usually get sometimes in trouble because I, when I'm asked a question, I give more of a complete answer. But I did have the positive thought about one thing. So let me just share it with you. I like the courtyard space as a major campus, one campus follow-on. Put in your, your center. Bring IT back from AD. Give up two classrooms to Bob. Bring a multitude of those together in one place. And take the over-committed, over-registered courses for those two classrooms as a hedge of not receiving state aid. Just some thoughts, multitude of thoughts regarding how that project could work. Provide a revenue stream, help us manage with our tax bills, help with a number of things. And improve the overall regional tech academy capabilities for the region. Just a broader brush, but probably we need to talk more, but just a thought.
I really thought it was very foresightful of the student to look at three different spaces and possibilities to have us.
I, I like the idea of looking at it more globally across the needs of the entire organization and then moving forward from there. So I think if, and I realize there have been some constraints recently on state aid, but I think if we hedge it right, it could be revenue neutral.
Thanks. What would, no, I was just going to say, how do you, how do you imagine this going forward?
Well, it's one piece of a bigger conversation. Okay. Yeah.
When we, when we met with the group, they continue to work. The design was great. I think the idea is a great, what we challenged the group to do was think more from a services and curricular standpoint before we commit to space and, and construction. I'm concerned, in a good way, I'm curious about how they see a tech center in a high school sharing a dual space and addressing concerns about, you know, we've got regional responsibilities, they've got, they've got local responsibilities. But they're, they get it. All the teachers are committed to it. They continue to work on it. And I think they'll come up with some, some pretty interesting ways of answering those questions. I suspect we'll be called to a meeting real soon.
I, sure. That's a good point. But I do think though, you bring up the good points about the differences between organizations. But at the same time, the bottom line is when either, when, when any student leaves either CTE or EHS, you need to be a career and/or college or a pre- period.
Right, yeah.
So that's the unifying link.
Right.
I am, I was fascinated how another concept kind of baked itself into this, and that is sort of that idea of space for students to practice handling more freedom for their actions. You know, we, this building, one of the ways this building serves us so well is that it's rather institutional so that, you know, we can buy large floor cleaners that can go down hallways and loop around and so forth. But it, it also is very institutional and not very representational of the twenty-first century that the kids are being prepared for. And, you know, I, I, I think there, there may be some baby steps in some of these ideas that are generally frightening to think of from our past perspective. But if we are going to create a future, you know, there, there are things of like different furnishings that, that are, that maybe aren't welded to the floor and things like that. So there, there may be some steps in here that could start to bridge towards that game.
Couple, couple of things to, to look at, as I've looked at a little bit in terms of looking to the future, the architectural design of the High Tech High in San Diego, New Tech High where we went, and also Franklin, Massachusetts is building a sixty-nine million dollar new high school. And their blueprint, it's fascinating website, they've got the PowerPoint as to why they needed it, very obvious if you watch it. It was their, their high school they're replacing, by the way, was built in nineteen seventy. And a lot of the reasons they're replacing is for architectural deficiencies where, because I think we have our capital plan in a much better place, that's a sidebar commentary. But my point is the blueprints for the new high school, it's, it's just fascinating to look at the design, three, you know, multipurpose libraries. I mean, it's just fascinating stuff, so.
I'll, I'll have a quick one to go.
One last, one last point to add a little bit more to this. I know Judy would love this. It would be nice to be at that point if the courtyard and a major project was developed at that point in time, but in the air conditioning we need for two oh.
Can I just, you all can just turn your jackets. I, what struck me is I liked the thought of the aesthetics of it also because I do think aesthetically, the courtyard, there's so much potential there that we're really missing out on as far as, however you want to look at it, you know, a retreat space, there's so many ways you could use it, but I just think, you know, it could use, you know, maybe some attention and fusion of, so there's a lot of potential there as well as I think the front of the building too.
Yeah.
The thing that caught my eye and then moved on was, was kind of connecting back to the topic you just raised before this. And this is, I think this is an excellent opportunity for alumni relations to come in and participate. We look at community involvement and life skill workshops and preparing for post-secondary opportunities. What better cohort of people that we have than people who have been through this and have those like experiences and who want to contribute back to our high school and our technical center to be able to work something out that we can take advantage of that. And I think this would be a good place for that to occur. But I, I recognize there's work to be done here and I think this board is interested to see how this is progressing and we look forward to hearing more as how this goes forward in the future. Okay. Thank you. Anything else, questions for Rob? Hearing none, we'll move on to our multiple pathways and denominants. I see that Michelle Rat, Dr. Rat is in the audience this evening and she's going to lead us through this discussion. Welcome back to North America. I would love to catch up with you sometime on that trip, but that's not what we're here to do tonight. And we look forward to listening to Michelle.
Should I sit here or?
Actually, I almost would prefer for you to come up here and be with us.
Okay. I'm going to give out a few handouts. And these are double-sided documents. And help fitting that we are talking about alumni, one of the handouts is called Naviance Alumni Sactor. Yeah, it is a good study. Do I need a third job? Yeah, okay. Are we short?
No. But this is one I have.
So there should be four documents.
I have, I have an extra set up here.
Okay, everyone help me? Okay. So what I'm going to do tonight is just give you a brief overview of this new tool that we're going to be using. It's called Naviance and it has been used in the past, I would say primarily as a way for schools, students, and parents to begin the college search process. And it is a web-based program. And the beauty of the program is that it has the ability to link with many of the school's data systems. So in our case, we are using Power School. And when we uploaded Naviance and joined the program, we were able to link Power School and Naviance together. What that means is that every school, every student in Essex High School can create an account. And the account is not just for the students, the account is also for the parents, the account is also for the school counselors, and the account is also for the students' teachers. And the purpose, the way that we're, we're using it is multiple, multiple usages. We as counselors rolled it out last year when we met with our juniors. And typically, in the early new year, we meet with our juniors and we begin the process of talking about course selection for the coming year. And when we begin to talk about course selection for senior year, we automatically begin the discussion of what are your plans for the future? Where do you see yourselves? How do you need assistance getting to where it is that you'd like to go? And at the time that we met individually with each of our juniors, we actually had them log on and create the account. And we used that opportunity to begin exploring what Naviance had to offer them as students, them and their families, their parents or guardians, and how we as school counselors can use it in our planning for the future year and a half. The document that's titled Naviance gives you a very quick overview of what Naviance has to offer. And what I will tell you is that there is the basic service that Naviance provides, which is the course planning, it's the college search process, and the linking with the student database. There are additional modules that we have actually purchased to be used with our students. The not, modules that we've chosen are a learning styles inventory that we are planning to use with all of our freshmen. So actually, beginning tomorrow, when we meet with our freshmen, we'll begin the discussion and we're going to set up individual appointments with each of our freshmen to do the learning styles. The other piece that it has is a career planning interest inventory module called Do What You Are. And we'll be using that with our sophomores and/or using it through the career unit in the computer applications classes. And the other module is one that's called the Individual Learning Plans, which is a separate handout, which is part of the new legislation that the Agency of Education has introduced. And there was some discussion last week at the education leadership team around how that might be folded out, who might be using it, will it be started at the middle school and be something that will follow the student up? Is there something that we can create so that it can indeed be used over multiple years with students? So that's something that's in development and under discussion. But just know that this tool called Naviance is something that we can use for that purpose. So we have an instrument that we can use to meet the legislative mandate. We can also use it as far as counselors and parents and students go around making some decisions as to a student's path through their high school career. Another piece of what we use it for currently in both the high school and I believe at the tech center, there is a lot of discussion as to how students plan and choose the courses that they take. And we begin this discussion when we go into the middle schools to start. And we begin this discussion when we go into the middle schools to start talking about transition to high school. And certainly, yeah, at the high school level, we have discussions when we're talking about course selection with respect to technical education and CTE. So now, instead of using something that is paper and pencil, we will have something that is electronic and can be accessed again by the student, by the counselor, by the parent, and even by the teachers. So the teachers are able to see what the student's path, projected path is. And I always say to people, when we did it on, you know, on paper, we used pencil because it's something that is constantly being modified and changed. When you do something electronically, obviously you can continually modify and adapt it based on the student's path as it unfolds. So we'll be using it for that purpose. And for our seniors, current seniors and our rising seniors, we'll be using it for college search process. The beauty of this instrument is, again, as students begin the whole search, where, where do I want to go? How am I going to get where I want to be and start creating lists of colleges? All of that will be kept in this tool. So I as a counselor can go in and look at my seniors and see their list as it's unfolding. And if I suddenly think of a college that I think might be a good addition or something that they might want to look at, I can add it electronically to their list along with a note. Jack, I think you may want to look at Clarkson for these reasons. And then you have the option, obviously, of considering it or taking it off your list. We can also use it, um, I'm sure you're aware that many colleges actually come to the high school beginning next week, all the way through April to visit. And we'll be able to send our seniors and our juniors emails about the various college visits, instructing them how they can set up appointments and actually meet with the college reps. So all of this, instead of announcements, instead of emails, this can all be done electronically. And our hope is, as more and more schools go paperless, we're going to have an electronic means of collecting, planning, selecting, applying, sending transcripts. All of that will now be done through this instrument. And from what I've heard from all of my colleagues who have been using it for a number of years, it's incredibly efficient. It's a very, um, easy, accessible tool. We'll be doing trainings for parents and community members who want to learn more about it. We've already rolled it out, as I said, to our juniors last year, our current seniors, and we'll be introducing it to our freshmen. So slowly, slowly, we're taking the steps to introduce it to EHS students. And I think it's going to be hugely, uh, successful and very effective.
In relation to the alumni?
Yes.
Is this something for?
You know, obviously, you'd be starting with the data of the first class that you started with. And so it, it has the potential to build an alumni base. Is there, is there an ability to kind of input past data to build?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes, in fact, each, each year, um, when we have a senior meeting, which is typically mid-May, we have a senior survey that we have students fill out. And on that survey, we ask students to indicate what their plans are for the next year, to provide us with an address, both email and a physical address, in addition to someone else with whom they're in contact. So it could be a neighbor, it could be a family member, it could be a close friend. And we have all of that data back probably 10, 12 years. So we've kept that and my registrar and our secretary could easily enter that data into the system so that we in fact would have longitudinal data for the past decade at least.
Do you know if this has the ability to say do a mailing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It can do a physical mailing.
Newsletter, okay.
It can address envelopes, it can send emails, um, it, it's really an amazing thing. So it could do all of that instead of having somebody creating all the labels, sticking them on an envelope and mailing them out.
Sorry.
Yeah.
How would this affect all of the skills or the work of the Kite's department today?
It's stretching us. We, I mean, I, I think certainly in the 13 years that I've been working in school counseling, I've seen the whole process and the whole role of the counselor evolve. Each year it evolves more and more. I remember when we used to sit with the viewbooks and look at the viewbooks, paper on. And now all of that is electronic, you can do college tours electronically. So I think we're relying more and more on technology. And so to be able to have the tracking system and selection system on a computer that can be accessed by so many different people, I think is really great. Um, I have to say, me as school counselors are still getting up to speed. This current senior year is going to be our year of guinea pigs, but Naviance has a track record that is, um, unbelievable. So I'm sure that we'll fumble our way through, the students will teach us how to use it and it'll be great.
There's going to be a learning curve.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, for example, two years ago, um, the, there's something called the Common Application, which is an application that more and more colleges and universities are using. So it used to be that you would fill out separate applications for each college to which you were applying. Now, there's one application that you fill out. And at last count, there were over 500 colleges that are using this common application. And two years ago, that went electronic. So we had to learn how to send teacher recommendations, student transcripts, uh, mid-year reports, all electronically. And that went fairly smoothly. So I'm sure that this will just be sort of another step in that process.
Just kind of question I had, I understand a whole lot of this technology stuff. So, um, Naviance, to communicate to the colleges and universities, they don't need to have Naviance, I mean, communicate with whatever they have.
With whatever they have, exactly. Yeah.
Anything else? So, go ahead, Rob.
So where do we stand with personal learning plans right now as far as an issue? What's our, what's the plan?
So in your org notes, um, the multiple pathways, um, legislation was included as far as the initiatives are concerned. Uh, so we're mandated through a rolling schedule to begin November 30th, 2015, to have personal learning plans in place for seventh graders, ninth graders, and then students in grade, uh, 11 and 12 if they are dual enrolled. We are, uh, as Michelle said, um, piloting sooner this work. So we're in a good position to be ready for this. So we're starting now, this readiness timeline that she's sharing with you, uh, because we have the tool. And what was great, um, as she mentioned about our, our leadership team was to see if our middle schools, could also use this tool as, tool as well, so we have that seamless, uh, transition for students seven through 12. So we're exploring, she's meeting with middle school principals to see how that, uh, alignment could work. And, um, even though it's a 2015, um, requirement, we're starting now so that our readiness will be there. And then ultimately, by November 30th, 2018, all students, grades seven through 12, will have personalized learning plans.
So, so the, so kind of going out with nine, 10, 11, 12, seven, eight, all, all kind of at once?
No, so it's seven, nine for grades 11, no, the seven, nine and 11 and 12 if they're dual enrolled in November of 2015. And then 2016, you'll add eighth graders and 10.
So.
See that?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just wondering with, how, how much of an attractive nuisance will the capability be to rolling it faster than some kind of patient roll out? No?
I don't think that'll, that'll be an issue. I think the issue is more, um, creating a template that would be acceptable at both the middle school level and be able to transition with the students in the high school level.
And there's a committee that's been, um, established at the state, the Agency of Education, uh, to inform what that template may look like, um, and the tools to, um, assist this process. And in January, we're supposed to be receiving guidance throughout the state on these, how to develop these plans, what the template looks like. Those guidance, that guidance is forthcoming in January.
Tom Alderman, one of the members of the Agency of Education, we met on May 24th and he's well aware that we're looking to utilize the personal learning plan in Naviance as our mechanism for PLPs. So he's going to be making sure that that's one of the items that's discussed at the table as well. To have that meeting in October.
Imagine, many of your colleagues are using it. Do you have a sense of what number of schools in Chippewa County are using it?
I'd say we are one of the last to sign on. I know CBU's been using it for seven years and SB for six years. And then schools like Vermont Commons, um, and then U, BFA Fairfax are just, they're about a year ahead of us.
Is your sense that they are using the ILP function already or?
I know, I know CBU is, um, I have a daughter who's using it, so. Um, but I don't know about the other ones. I know that they're definitely using it for learning styles, for the, um, interest inventory and for college search.
One of the concerns CTE has is how, what role we're going to play in helping students achieve their learning plans? Or do we do the learning plans on our own?
Right.
And if we're dealing with nine schools with, let's guess, five different formats, some electronics, some paper, with different features, it'd be an interesting contrast.
Well, that's where a statewide committee would really be helpful. Yeah.
That's helpful.
Absolutely. And, and the irony is that we as school counselors have been doing that. Every year, we get together at the beginning of the year with all of our freshmen. But what we've come to find out is that there are many individual teachers who also use it because they see that it's critical in getting to know their students. And so to have one instrument that everybody can use and have access to, I think will be great. Not redundant. Exactly. Yeah.
It's really helpful when these mandates come forward that there's some forms of standardization because of, especially when they affect, you know, pre-K through 12 systems. And our opportunity to align our resources, uh, in a meaningful way. So I have great hope that this committee will, um, provide with, you know, more than guidelines and more guidance and direction, um, so that we can be on the same page, especially for the sake of CTE students.
Well, I would also, I would also echo, we're in a similar boat where we have students from five and with school choice now, it could be more than, more than 10.
That's right.
With school choice. So, what's I'm saying?
Well, I think, Michelle, we're coming tonight because, um, it foreshadows to the board the work we're doing to be in compliance with the multiple factors initiative. And, um, it was really exciting to hear the conversation that our leadership team made to start planning, moving together. I have to keep in mind our middle schools and our, and our other schools that sit on our campus. Thank you for taking the time. I know it's so incredibly busy right now.
I just, I just want to say thank you to the board for supporting the, the funding of this because we've been asking for it for a few years and I know that budgets have been tight and I think the timing is right on and I think it's going to be really useful as far as probably moving forward. So thank you for the support. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah. Just, just to add on a personal note, and I think, uh, Superintendent DeNoe would may, may recall this, about three years ago when I was going through the final bit of college search and selection process, I had been tracking, uh, some online message boards and the term Naviance kept popping up from people all over the country. And I said, what is, you know, kind of, what is this thing? And I got some information that would, you know, like through parent portals from, from various countries, just representative data that would come through and I was just awestruck at the information that was available on that, on the, uh, college career, uh, college planning and career opportunity, data that was being made available to parents to help with, you know, and not, and not just academic, but also financial information that was in there. Uh, it was, it was awesome and I, I shared with, with, uh, Mike DeWes and Judy and actually Amy Cole at the time because I kind of viewed this as being a curriculum instruction and, uh, assessment tool for individual learning plans, that this is something we needed, we needed to engage with. So I too am very happy to see us on this because I think it's, it's, it's amazing and, uh, I'd be willing to talk about this more at a, at a, at a different venue, but nevertheless, good information. Okay, um, the updates to the CCU-wide website, uh, is that something you were hoping to talk about?
It is something I'm going to do. I'd, I'd like to do calendar two O first.
You want to do calendar two, okay, so in the agenda, we'll, we'll flip-flop, we'll do the calendar two point O overview first.
We'll be between two machines today. Calendar, uh, two O is a proposed calendar. I'm going to provide you, uh, an overview with some context and, um, information, so that you have some understanding when community members might approach you about what is this? Where it come from, what's it about? And you have some talking points and a needs of getting some information about the calendar beyond this presentation. So the conversation originated with, uh, Champlain, Champlain Valley Superintendent's Association. And this is a group of regional superintendents, there's approximately 17 of us. We meet monthly. Uh, superintendents come from Addison, Chittenden, Franklin and Grand Isle counties. And, um, one area that we're required by Vermont law is to create school, regional school calendars. And we need to do that for areas that have technical centers so that we have common 175 student days in the calendar. So the mandate comes from Title 16, Section 1071. And we've been doing this for many, many years. Typically, you don't hear about the calendar until January because most of the time there are very few changes made to it. I will say also at this point in time, that the common 175 student days are regional in nature and do not include whatever local, uh, agreements you have with your teacher associations for additional days. So in 2010, we've really been talking about this for over six years now. And in 2010, CBSA charged a task force to really, uh, study, um, alternative models and recommend a calendar based on an agreement about principles, uh, that we build upon. And you probably remember last year, I, uh, did a presentation, um, that the Vermont Superintendent's Association did on the, on the quality framework that was created. And during that time, uh, we talked about, we were using the term vision calendar. At that time, we talked about moving from traditional, traditional annual school calendars and schedules to, um, instructional, instruction and learning delivered anytime and anywhere. to instructional, instruction and learning delivered anytime and anywhere and what that can look like. So this, this shouldn't be news to you. We've been working on looking at this structure for a while. So the guiding principles that the task team identified, including most importantly, supporting learning for all students and never has there been a time that every student is being required to achieve high standards. The structure is really meant to meet the needs of today's youth and today's teachers. You can see for yourself that we're looking about that, providing timely interventions and including enrichments during the school year for all students. Providing that best first instruction, so there's less need for review. Increasing access to language-rich environments with our demographics changing and more new American, Americans joining our schools. Those language-rich environments are critically important. And also talking about how do we minimize that loss of learning that oftentimes occurs over that long summer break. We looked at some research about how a school calendar can support positive school climate through creating a better distribution of pace with reasonable chunks of time to promote student learning. And in this proposed calendar, we're looking at approximately seven weeks of instruction, then two weeks off. And we'll talk more about that as I get into the specifics. It's also about momentum and natural rhythm and balance throughout the school year. It's also an opportunity for us to look at scheduling timely, timely teacher professional development during non-student days. Currently, it's, a lot of our teachers are attending Common Course Date Standards Training at times when we have to have a substitute in their place to attend those training opportunities. So we're introducing here this concept of intercessions that two-week time period that is currently expanded in this new schedule. It does still honor the traditional school vacations, so it does preserve that. We, we thought that there'd be enough of a change to not make it more difficult to not honor what is traditional currently. And it does maintain the one hundred and seventy-five days. It distributes the student days more evenly. We've been thinking about ways to embed weather days, which would create a more predictable end of the year. And in defining these intercessions, as far as where does the time come from? It came from current abbreviated weeks. So we created whole weeks of instruction through those abbreviated days and weeks. When we presented the calendar to VIC, the Vermont Interscholastic Council, which is comprised of students from our nine high schools in Chittenden County, they were like, well, where did this extra time come from? And so as we explained, well, you see a day here and a day there, what we did was we blocked it. And they said, it'd be really helpful if you showed this calendar side by side. So people can see, one, it's really not that dramatically different than what we currently have in place. And two, the biggest difference is it begin, the school year will begin five days earlier and will end five days later, which coincidentally, due to our four weather days this past year, it's scheduled to end on the same day that school ended last year for students. What are some of the current issues within the school calendar now? And our students during that meeting talked about how much their learning time is compromised. For example, if a class, a humanities class is doing a field trip to the Flynn Theater, students have to say, okay, do I go on this, on this field trip and miss that math class? Or a test? Or they're compromised with always having to make decisions when multiple things happen during a school day. It's also, we've started a practice that the, the current Secretary of Education was opposed to. But because there's such a, such pressure for professional development time, we have created early release days within the calendar now. And those are not always in the best interest of students when you send students home. One, they typically don't stay for lunch. And two, they often go home to homes where there isn't any supervision or structured activity. I already talked about the unpredictable end of the year, which is really difficult for childcare providers as well as recreation areas where our pools are opened and we can't have people staff in pools because they're still in class. And this year was a huge challenge for people who offer summer programming. There's limited time in our current schedule for internships and community connections as we're trying to promote those personalized learning opportunities for kids. It's really difficult when they're mandated to see time for class instruction. And also, due to the increase in our standardized testing, we have high student absenteeism, especially for our tech center where there's a, a three window, a three-week window of testing time in the fall for kneecaps. And there's also a kneecap testing window, the science kneecaps for juniors twice a year. During that six-week period of time, every school in the region makes their own testing schedule based on whatever's happening in each of their schools. And then Bob tries to manage that, knowing that it's difficult during those times to have full student attendance in programs. Some of the intercession possibilities that we've talked about, and here I'm going to insert that I'm careful not to overpromise on this because I'm talking through the lens of possibilities right now. But we are talking about the personalized learning plans for students, which nicely followed what Michelle was talking about with guidance. People wanting to meet with each individual student. You know, our capacity to do that right now is severely limited. Also looking at timeliness for reteaching and some intervention. Right now, oftentimes if a student has a misconception, that goes on and sometimes it's not, an intervention is not made, which builds on further misunderstandings. So being timely with that is critically important and not waiting for the summer school intervention time. Opportunity to engage with experts. In this county, we have many experts available in our communities and having time for our students to connect with them is hugely important. Also, interestingly, and this came from our students, balancing school time with homework and jobs and multiple activities that they participate in through music and sport, sports, and they're juggling all the time. In fact, one of the students was from Belgium. And he was saying, this is a calendar that's much more like my calendar from my, when I attended school in Belgium. And he said, all I can say about that is that it was so much more humane. And right now, a lot of our students are, are organizing and petitioning boards to create policies like no homework policies because they're struggling to, to begin homework oftentimes at eleven o'clock at night after their sporting events and jobs and, and whatnot. So there's a lot to juggle. And hopefully it helps us pace time so that there's space for that creation and reflection and involvement. For teachers, some of the calendar issues is that they've talked about. They said there's limited time for meaningful teacher collaboration. There's the only time, there's limited time for creating those personalized learning plans that we talked about earlier. There's limited time to respond to early when students are struggling. And there are no consecutive professional development times with the exception of the beginning of the year and the end of the year across our region. So there's never two consecutive days when teachers can get together. And there's not limited time for them to establish meaningful partnerships with community organizations. I mean, hats off to the wonderful work they've done in this area. And I can only imagine what it could look like if they had additional time to, to develop those partnerships. During intercessions, some possibilities that could exist for teachers would be true analysis of student data where teachers were working collaboratively in teams to look at some of that work. A customization of personalized learning plans and some partnerships and involvement to extend learning opportunities. Some calendar issues for families. We're finding it's very difficult for families to schedule routine appointments, like doctor's appointments and dentist's appointments. And oftentimes, kids are being released from school as well as these early release and abbreviated weeks are creating some, some true childcare issues. There's limited time for extended family trips. And oftentimes, principals are receiving requests to approve vacations beyond the time that's identified in our current calendar. And teachers are being asked to create lessons, lessons for students while they're away on vacations. Many of our families are coping with students that have summer boredom. Some of you might be in that situation now where they've been anxious to return for the last two weeks to school, if not sooner. And also, there's limited seasonal experiences for families. Summer has lots of opportunity, but there's really limited experiences throughout the four Vermont seasons. So the possibilities may include evenly distributing time to accommodate for those appointments and those extended family trips. Again, to improve that balance in family life, to access quality childcare that may be able to be furnished right at the local neighborhood schools and to take advantage of Vermont's wonderful four seasons. So what are some of the logistics behind this? Well, there's various needs and quality childcare is number one, as well as enrichment, tutoring remediation, professional development and transportation, to name just a few. I will tell you that this calendar does not present any new need. We, these needs are with us every year in our current calendar. So they're not new to us, but there's limitations in how that, we can currently address them. So we organized a partner summit on July twenty-third to explore what we could do as far as creating some quality programs. And as you know, the state was involved in an effort to create a statewide calendar years ago. And that effort was not successful. And I would propose that one of the reasons it wasn't successful is because there's a lot of grassroots efforts that need to happen through partnerships for quality programs to occur at the local level. So this is sort of that grassroots effort to begin having those important conversations about working together on behalf of our students. Sixty-four people attended this summit. Thirteen had statewide and cross-regent partners. They included organizations such as the Flynn Theater and the Barry Mary Theater and recreation programs. They all came to the table. And with them, eighteen after-school programs came to the table along with seven superintendents and six librarians and started talking about what opportunities could be made possible for students, for teachers and for families. In working together, we talked about lots of opportunities for regional and local programs to be created and/or expanded. Some of our, some of those programs have funding connected to them, like the Twenty-First Century Grant and some regional resources as well. We're trying to keep in mind whatever could be offered, that it would be offered with little or low cost to families so all students would have opportunities. And to make sure whatever's being offered also aligns with our local schools. And ultimately, want to increase the use of school facilities. Currently, there's ten weeks of summer vacation. There are some programs that happen during that summertime. But that's a pretty big stretch of time for the facilities to be untapped to the, to the level they could be used. You probably remember each of the boards participated in that thirty questions that our communication task team members, activity to, to understand what your questions would be about this. This is the same event, the same activity happened with those students in VIC across the nine high schools in Vermont. And they were really focused, there were all the groups, most on learning. And that came up repeatedly and transitions and the difficulty with that. To their credit, most student councils, those students attending were tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders. And they were saying, well, this probably won't be something that will affect our school careers, which is sort of a sad statement to hear. But they were really engaged for the benefit of underclassmen, which I thought was quite honorable for students to be thinking about the kids that are, that are younger than, than them where they might have the opportunity to benefit from these changes. There's a blog spot called schoolcalendartwopointblogspot.com where information has been posted about this calendar. And there's a reader's corner there with all the frequently asked questions that you can peruse to see some of the reoccurring questions and what the responses are to those. So that when people in the community come to you as board members to ask questions about the calendar, you have a place to refer them for additional information that might be helpful to them. Because there is a lot of misinformation out there. There's concerns that this is a school year-long school calendar and just a lot of erroneous information. So please recommend folks and refer them to this spot. The regional superintendents are going to hold four regional forums to engage with the communities about this calendar. Just, the regional superintendent's intention is to hear what possibilities might exist. It's not about selling this calendar or, you know, not thinking about any changes to it. We've already heard some great recommendations on how to improve its current structure and want to hear more through these engagement opportunities. I'll say now, as I've said many opportunities, I've had to speak about the calendar. This is not a done deal. This is the beginning of a conversation about the needs of today's youth and today's teachers. And it requires that we come together and talk about these needs so that we can have the opportunity to change some archaic structures that are really limiting our opportunity to meet some of the students' needs. After our leadership summit, principals recommended that we hold educator forums as well. So teachers will have an opportunity to also share their thoughts and opinions about calendar two O toward making whatever necessary adjustments or improvements might be possible. So I'll be meeting the first four Mondays of September, September ninth with ADL. So I'll be meeting the first four Mondays of September, September ninth with ADL, the following September with Summit in Hiawatha staff, the third September, week in September I'll be meeting with EHS, CTE, and Fleming School, and Octo, and the last of September, I'll be meeting in Westford. So we'll engage with teachers, and again, I'm hoping that information will further inform and improve, and also hopefully our teachers will be across the region in attendance at some of these regional forums as well. So that's the presentation. I'm open to any questions that you might have or comments at this time.
This is the second time I've heard this presentation, and so I'm beginning to see where you're coming from a little better after hearing it repeated the second time. But one of the questions, when I reflect on all of this, I always go back and try to do my research, and other districts or studies that have made a similar kind of change, is there any data available out in the rest of the internet world?
That's, that's a frequently asked question that we receive. And what's interesting is it depends so much on, on local and regional needs. I'll give you an example. My first ten years of teaching was in Northern Maine. Schools started the first week of August, and we started then because the whole mid-month of September through October was potato harvest time in Roostick County, and all the schools closed so the students could harvest potatoes. So depending upon regional needs, you know, school calendars are arranged really at local levels frequently. There have been, we have visited schools in Arizona. Elaine Hittney, who was the deputy commissioner during the time, and currently is superintendent in Chitman South, visited those schools, and the reason why those schools were visited was because of their high achievement results. She learned through that visit that to have that balance also helps kids to self-regulate and to have that time to be more ready for learning opportunities. So there was a direct impact on discipline data and positive school climates. So we learn from different places. There's a link there to states across the nation that have used different calendars to meet their needs. It's a great research piece to review, and I, and I think that there's no, you know, perfect calendar, there were, we all be doing it. I think it needs to be adjusted locally, and we have to look at it through the lens of resources and through conversation about creating those quality programs during times when these intercessions take place, just as we have during that extended summer time currently.
It's two things, it's, it's definitely built on the premise that one seventy-five's the number. I know that's today's number.
Today's number.
But it's, it's trying to take research and trying to be aspirational for certain outcomes and changing our learning environment, all built around one seventy-five being the magic number.
Because it's our current resource allocation, and we didn't think we could propose a change that would require our taxpayers.
So it'd be interesting to see, again, I, I think you always have to be resource-wise, but you can't design an airplane resource-wise and leave the wings off. So I think it would be interesting to see where this is to evolve to.
Absolutely.
So that it's transparent, that it, that it may be a fund, you know, it may be a change now, but it has an evolutionary period to it.
As well as, you know, I would love to hear from, through these forums, about people's opinion about the one hundred and seventy-five. So it's, it's a great opportunity to begin those needed conversations.
Good. And my second question is, the one seventy-five is also as established as the one eighty-six and one eighty-four, you know, depending upon the contract that we have. So does the intercessions have teaching happening within the contract, or are those extra-duty stipends, or are those?
Those are possibilities that we're talking about now. At the leadership team meeting, what was crafted was locally, a model for our SU. We inserted what we believe would be the best place to schedule our teacher professional development days, so we have that designed, as well as inserting some make-up weather days in that May timeframe. So we localized it according to our one hundred and seventy-seven student days and our one hundred and eighty-nine professional development days. So each contract throughout the county, of course, is different, so we're going to show at these regional forums some models of what it would look like, because when you see that initially, you don't see the insertion of those PV days or those additional days, so it looks like a lot more vacation time than you're, you're used to seeing in the school calendar, and that's because there's fourteen days now scheduled into what you, you saw through the coming one hundred and seventy-five days.
Because I think that's the biggest question that, I mean, it sounds like the ultimate goal of doing this, one of the ultimate goals was to try to prevent aggression that happens. But I guess it still wasn't necessarily adding up to me when I looked at the new calendar, I wasn't seeing. I guess I'm still just not seeing it, and I'm, and I'm stuck on that number, because I'm having a hard time understanding how we're going to provide instruction during the intercessions and not mess with this magic number, and where those resources will come from. And also, my, my big question is, who's going to manage all this? I mean, is the SU going to manage coordinating the volume of all of these programs that we're talking about? I mean, it sounds to me like there, there seems to be a piece missing, which is kind of from the resource allocation perspective of, so now who's, who's going to manage all of these intercession opportunities? What are they going to be, who's going to program, and who's going to staff it? So that's, that's still, I think, a big question that I have about it, too.
And that's why those engagement opportunities and providing us and those partnerships and we've made with our partners, an opportunity to talk further about, you know, what will that look like. Mark Andrews, Superintendent Essex Town, and I met with our local partners, actually during, after one of the leadership team meetings. Was that only a week ago? A week ago. And our, our after-school partners have assured us that as soon as they know when those days are, that they can provide program. So we're fortunate in Essex Junction, that our Essex Junction Mexican Parks is also managed through the school system, so we have some opportunities already in place. But those conversations are really bringing an opportunity for us to think through new opportunities during that time. That's going to take time, and that, too, is going to be an evolution process. I think, you know, the first year out of the gate, there may be only some warming that happens during those times, and some limitations around programming and reteaching opportunities. We'll have to see as this gets structured, further structured, what can be made available, and that, and then to see how we can grow that. So it's, it's going to take an evolutionary path that ultimately will prove opportunity for all students to change those calendars.
And is this something that's definitely happening for the, the targeted timeframe of the new calendar? This is definitely going to happen in this year, there will be a new calendar.
Well, there'll definitely be a calendar that year, but I think it'll be based upon the engagement and conversations that we have. So people would say, yeah, if people are saying, for this coming year, how about this? And that's a common message across the region, you know, we're not in a position to want to oppose this calendar at all. We just want to be open to listening to what could be possible, and for people to come to the table with a mindset of, how can we structure it a little differently? And to engage in that kind of conversation versus just saying no to change because they weren't a part of the process. That's our.
Are all the video engagements going to be filmed and recorded?
We're working on having our ETN supporter workers.
Trying to be helpful for those who can't.
That can attend. And you, you don't have to attend the forums, you know, you can attend any of the forums. You don't have to attend the ones, the first one that happens here, October 2nd, is just convenient, because it'll be here at the EHS cafeteria. But there's, you can also attend the other three, they'll be very, they'll be structured very similarly. In fact, we've been fortunate to have Heart and Soul, who's done a lot of work in this community around engagement opportunities, help facilitate a structure that would improve engagement, and also they've trained many facilitators. Heart and Soul, I've included information as far as the September twenty-fifth date in your org notes as well. After their work of collecting qualitative data all year long, they are ready to move from research to action, and on September twenty-fifth, there's going to be the opportunity to see how to put those values that have been identified into action. And I'm quite pleased to announce, and I'm sure many of you are already keenly aware, that education is the number-one value in this community, and that's why I think it holds great promise for people to come together and brainstorm collaboratively about what we do to continue to make improvements for student learning.
Thank you, Judy, for that discussion. We'll go into the CCSU worldwide website discussion.
Change, I'm all about change today. The primary thing for you to know about our website is that we're looking to have a more contemporary presence, and through that lens, we're trying to create a mobile-friendly environment. So this new page is being created, so there is something that you can see right on your mobile phone. But in doing so, it meant relocating some of the information. So I'm just going to give you a very quick preview. Instead of having at the top here all of our schools listed, which we have in, in our current site, all of our schools are going to be listed in one area that'll be a drop-down menu. And then what used to be on the right-hand scroll bar on the site is now going to be across the top. So some of the common tools that we use, some of the additional facilities, HR, our boards, those are all going to be located across the top. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to show you some of the proposed changes. We're not looking to make changes to the web until the end of September, and have an opportunity, hopefully during orientation meetings with our families, to talk about what some of those, what some of those changes could look like. We have a test site, we're, we're constructing this in a whole different environment. We've shown it to several groups already for, for their insights, and we'll continue to use the feedback that we've been receiving. In the left-hand section will be a quick links, and this you can customize yourself, whatever you think is the most important quick link to have. The school port is a place where you can sign, log in. We wanted to make that look more prevalent, because oftentimes we've been receiving calls that people couldn't access different information, and that's because they weren't logged into the site, so this should make that more prevalent. And our upcoming events will be, continue to be highlighted on the left-hand scroll bar. We've done things like, you know, the footer at the bottom is slimmer, the same footer, but it was just really looking at, at our, at our means of creating a more contemporary look.
Is this, does this logic and, and what, carry over to all the schools?
Yes.
So what was along the left is along the right, what was on the right is next to the left?
Yes, it's the same.
Now Judy, is this, are you proposing this just for the mobile version?
No, the mobile version and it's.
So you're saying this, this is, this is what the.
The new site will look like.
Because that's, that's fantastic.
Thanks, yeah. We're kind of working on this website.
Because it's just like, like right now, I'm, you know, looking at the current version, and this is, this just makes so much more sense, you know, because there's just not so much stuff.
Yeah, it was too compact, and so people were having trouble, you know, accessing some of the information, so it's a better use of the real estate, let's say, to make it breathe better.
And the customizable option that you'll have, to basically, there's like five things you can choose with, whatever.
Right.
And your top.
It'll all be customizable, so people have easy access to those things that they want to connect with on a daily basis.
Am I going to get a CCSU VT app?
Well, stay tuned. I'm really excited about these changes, because we, you know, we developed this, we'll say our website now would be like the age of a second grader, so it's kind of about seven years old, and we developed it from scratch, so now it's really exciting to see it move into this next iteration. It'll have, you know, the symbols for Twitter and your RSS feeds, much more effectively looked than, than we currently have, so.
And it will get utilized, the utilization of the website, once you have this mobile version, it's going to go.
For three ninety-nine months.
Why didn't you recommend that earlier, right?
You didn't ask me.
So that's just a quick preview. We'll send you a link to the test site, so you can play with it yourselves. And again, we'll make it available to our principals for orientation night, so parents might have access and an opportunity to discover it as well.
Okay. Thank you, Judy. Next is, our next item is our report from our board task teams. We have three that we're looking forward to hear from this evening, communications, policy, and negotiations. I know you've been talking quite a bit for the past half hour or so, Judy, but I don't know if you want to fill us in on communications work, or should we have our board representatives talk about?
We have Alvin Barrier and Gary Baker.
Okay.
Gary, can I double it?
I remember the phone. I'm thinking, I feel it when I can, but it's.
We did, we did get quite a presentation about Two-O, and, and that was, you can see, there's, there's a lot of information, a lot of things to think about. From the, I think, you can see the advantages, just all the things that Judy's listed. One of the questions that I asked had to do with the air conditioning aspect of it, because it's a longer school year, and we're having warmer, it seems warmer than usual. This year, wetter, but temperatures have been quite higher than, than I remember years ago. So there could be some climate change issues that would require air conditioning. One of the ways to bridge that is to phase this in over a period of time, and then try to put those in at a later date. So phase certain activities during those warmer months for the students to plan for it. So I think, I don't know how, how hard. So I don't know how hard or difficult or easy that was to do, but that was one of the areas. The second area that I just touched on was the research. And the only, in my experience, the only schools that have done that have been ones in which the community decided not to expand capital, infrastructure, space, but then created a year-round school in a smaller facility. And I think it might be worth while to go back. If I get a chance, I'll do some research on that, see if I can figure out if there's a learning improvement from that environment versus conventional. We did talk about effective board meetings, and one of the suggestions was to add an agenda item to find out from board members to board members before we leave on what worked and what could be improved. I thought that was a good idea. And yes, leaders at work merging into the communications committee. Thought that the basic message there was that it could be more effective in terms of communicating school board educational opportunities for all of the members that are there, then they could bring those opportunities back to their boards. That's good.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay.
Policy. Brian, or are you our... Brian, our policy representatives, right? Is there any policy task team report outs that we can share?
We can have a policy meeting. We can have our most recent one in August. July is canceled, but we had some issues back in June as well. So, well, we will regroup and double down.
That's fine. No, I dare say, since we signed our most recent contract with the Teachers Association, also, we haven't met any negoti... We have the negotiations team hasn't met, nor has leaders at work had any meetings. Really, I think since the second Wednesday in May might have been perhaps the last time that that task met. So I understand we get into a kind of summer ball under calendar 1.0. We might need an intercession here, though. But as I think, I'm expecting that our task teams will be reintegrated again as it's a school year, so thank you for reporting on communications.
Under... Not task teams of ours, but how about the executive committee, an update on where it's progressing with regards to work ahead on search?
As a matter of fact, there has been some progress just recently. Just to backtrack and make sure everyone's up to speed on what's happening, the executive committee, or the board chairs from U 46 and Westford, and the Presidential Committee as designated from the C C S U school board have gone out on trying to, well, not trying, but making a recommendation for superintendent search process. To that end, a couple of things, two key elements that have been going on on that. One element was maintaining the good order in administration while we go through a superintendent search process. To that end, Superintendent De Nova is here maintaining the good work that we have, both in the past and going forward in the future. And for the future work that's ongoing, we've engaged, in fact, just this week, we've contracted with, I don't know if that contract is finally in or not, with Brian O'Regan to be a facilitator in our superintendent searching and evaluation process. And that's data that we'll be reporting back out at our next C C S U board. But that's the progress that's been going on throughout. It's been moving at a glacial pace, but it's been moving this summer, so... And that's what we're standing right now. All right. Brian, board visioning work.
Yes. I think, so following our planning session where Mary Jane led some work for us to begin the conversation, begin to understand a little bit more about appreciative inquiry, she and I met for a few hours. Her takeaway was that her, sort of by accident, her question of, you know, waking up in some future and starting to talk about it, started to uncover the fact that there's only about six people in the world that think about U 46. And otherwise, everybody stands on the ground they stand on. And so, this concept of a strategic plan for U 46 is an interesting one to think about. And so, you know, coming out of that, her recommendation is actually to stay within the confines of the proposal, but maybe to try to seat an advisory team earlier with a substantial amount of internal stakeholders to explore this idea of U 46. I understand that facilities, as we look at the career planning, facilities are one of the easily identified intersection points that we have. But I think as we were playing around with it, and even that night, we were talking about a seamless educational experience for our students that maximizes their educational opportunities for personal learning. You know, this idea of what if there weren't two organizations? What if the adults weren't involved, and that the kids were sort of just intersecting throughout this seamless educational experience? What might that look like in our 21st century? So it's interesting for us to play around with because I think it's pretty substantial on whether we're going at a U 46 facility project, and we're going to approach it strategically, or whether we're looking at a strategic plan for U 46, or whether we're looking at two distinct strategic plans for U 46 and for, I mean, for C T E and E H S. And it's a little unknown at this point in time which one that's going to be. So she thought that it would be valuable to come back in, have a work session with the board, to have some time to really understand what is the role of the advisory team, how those internal constituents and stakeholders could be involved in this appreciative inquiry process of asking the question and listening to responses about U 46, about our direction, and to work with the board to start to identify who are the necessary stakeholders that might be on that. So it's sort of like trying to start back at the beginning and saying, oh, wait a minute, we need to figure this out a little bit, which path we're going to go on, and what is that sort of primary guiding question. So I would recommend that, you know, that it be considered, September is not a time that we have a regularly scheduled board meeting. That it may be one in which it might be possible for us to have a work session and devote it to the vision project. I think that will also allow us to better acclimate ourselves to what kind of involvement we're going to have as a board in this visioning process. It's not going to be something that happens outside of board work. You know, the concept here is for us to become really engaged in this visioning and strategic planning process and not have it sort of assigned somewhere. And then, that might seed us to have an ability to come into our regularly scheduled meeting in October, have a smaller session incorporated into our meeting to talk about how the board works with the advisory team, what the concept and the hope is, and then going into November, which I think is another off month for us, that November would be a time where we might be able to have our first meeting kind of with the advisory team and start talking about this. The idea, again, is to look at these established points in our calendar, of our governance calendar, to see how we can get momentum discreetly on appreciative inquiry, to then lead up and maybe do some kind of engagement around our annual meeting. Try to make our annual meeting have a little bit more at stake of listening, you know, encouraging attendance not to hear us present, but actually encouraging attendance for us to listen.
Brian, do you have a progress that...
Yes.
Is there a progress report, or is it still missing?
Yep. So I think, you know, I'm anxious to, you know, have the conversation, see what the will of the board is to have a September work session. If not, then we could look at the October board meeting. But we... I think we have a pretty fundamental question to answer about what path are we going? We know that N I A S C is asking us to look at things like mission, core values, you know, all those elements, which seem like they're wonderful things to be asking, you know, the broadest stakeholder group imaginable through this lens, ideally. So we know we have some work. Which pieces do we want to tackle? Any questions? Did anyone have that, any reflection about the kind of the U 46 awkwardness? That we're...
I think it's really good that that kind of covered.
Yeah.
Because if it didn't come up then, it was really going to be a big snag if something just had to be... So...
Yeah, and I think what's interesting is to recognize, even though Mary Jane, I wouldn't consider as an outsider, because she's done a lot of work within the organization, her read on what we were saying about strategic planning for U 46, and this is the U 46 board, whether U 46 and so forth, really led that when we came to the question saying, well, we have one mission statement, right, where everyone's like, I don't think so. She kind of realized that it was like, whoa, wait a minute, this is... There's a different story in actuality than this kind of beautiful umbrella. So, and I want to, you know, we need to do this within the idea of honoring our present and our past and designing our collective future. And so, how we go about that, I think, is a process that we're all involved. So I don't know if that's an agenda planning thing or a sort of a sign of interest by the board now that they'd be willing to commit a night?
So what... Is that the question you're putting for us right now, Brian, is do we want to commit some time in September for a, I'll call it a breakout board visioning, and that's our sole topic for a September meeting?
I mean, I personally, I would prefer to see it be a separate work session and try to tack it on to a fourth meeting. It really doesn't look like it'd be very functional.
Sorry, Erin, but yes, I too would prefer to make the time for this note to occur in September rather than try and shoemore it in on top of the already full agenda.
Judy, are you down to direct that there's no regularly scheduled board meetings?
I was just looking at that.
Are you right? There's, you're asking a board meeting on the 30th, but there are now board meetings scheduled then. And you were correct, also, last member, and those were intentionally structured in a way to...
Indeed.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think normally, we might be, right now, we're sort of just getting traction towards what, how, who, when. And I think the next one's good, that opens up for us.
For the best...
Judy, what? A suggestion, I would suggest, on Monday evening, September 16th, that's when we would have our normal third Monday of the month kind of C C, excuse me, U 46 meeting anyway. I know some of us have, that Mondays and Tuesdays are better than other days of the week for work schedule kinds of things, and so I would offer that as a suggestion. Again, not knowing what Mary Jane's availability is either, and I think she's a key player in scheduling.
Yeah. Wish to talk tomorrow.
16th to 23rd, should only be okay with me.
Because we do have the, that week of the 16th and the 19th is the open house.
Open house. There's a possibility I'm going to be out of town the week of the 23rd, so for, so to deconflict, I need to be the, the week of the 16th is better for me.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday.
I mean, that sounds okay, like, isn't it?
Yeah.
I'm going to check on Jane. I know she's available on what time, usual times? 6:30 or...
Yeah. I'd accidentally be driving here for 6:30.
All right. I'm consistent, right?
That's right, there's no meeting this month, but they'll be safe.
So one of the things I was going to ask is, when that conversation happened, I was regretful that we didn't have board attendance during that time, and I think they could have wanted to create more meetings with them. I think they're role players or key players to invite.
Absolutely.
At the board raise.
Yeah, I certainly, I think that, I don't like to have the conversation, I try to be as humane as possible for, try and keep people's lives together, but I think this is important, especially at this point, because depending on whom we go, it's going to be a little bit better, we'll kind of involve in this kind of thing. So I'm certain you feel that.
I think we can just, I don't think this is a, something that we need to do per second to set this meeting, but I would recommend, Brian, that you go back in your discussion with Mary Jane tomorrow, do you say?
Yep.
And offer, see if she's available on the 16th, and then, you know, let the U 46 board and administration know if that date, sorry, if it doesn't, but what's an alternative Mary Jane can do, and we can decide on this.
Judy, okay.
Okay. Any other board visioning topic that we want to, need to discuss this evening?
I was going to ask Brian, because we're looking for some clarity around the board's authorization to sign a contract with Mary Jane Shelley. And I wanted to just make sure that we had that authorization, Brian had it, so that we could get the contract signed.
Yeah, I think that in the minutes, the last approval was, yep, on the advisory, and I think if the motion is a little bit more specific on who's authorized to sign, sort of, and like what.
Right. I mean, I know that we have approved the budgeting process for someone else, just a, a signature. Signature, who's authorized to sign.
Yeah. So it's not, I don't know if this is a procedural thing, it's not, right, it's an action item?
Right. But I think it's just talking about the final action to complete the contract process.
Mm-hmm. Just so that it's in the minutes, you think we'll find?
I think so.
So maybe if the minutes reflected that the board agreed to have Brian execute the contract with Trifocal Consulting for the purposes of strategic planning?
Any further discussion? So we have a motion by Alan, second by Jack, for Brian to act on behalf of the U 46 board in signing the contract with Trifocal. All in favor, say aye. Brian, opposed? Motion passes 6-0. So come in here.
Okay. Brian, give me a thought, you said it's for Trifocal, is our second part of that? Trifocal Consulting. So agreed to have you do that, Trifocal Consulting, what's the last part of that? Agreed with... For the vision plan? For the purpose. For the purposes of strategic planning. For the purposes of strategic planning.
I agree.
Okay, anything else on the visioning process, whether the process discussion or the administrative, who can sign the paperwork discussion? Okay, Act one fifty-three, one fifty-six discussion. And... We have in our org notes some background information, but are you gonna lead us through that, this discussion this evening?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we talked a little bit about this at Planning Day, and I've included in the org notes, clear background information, the letter we received from Vaughn Ultimus on behalf of Secretary Villasaka denying our approach for the Act one fifty-three policy, work that we've done and procedure we developed. The reasons he stated were included living the letter, and you also had an opportunity to see the letter that Dr. Dewey sent, and his assertions that we would be able to meet the intent of one fifty-three through this approach. At this stage of time, I'm just asking this board to make recommendations to, for your SU board members that will be making a decision at their SU board meeting as to whether or not to submit a waiver. There, we have drafted a waiver, and that will, is being currently reviewed by your board council. That waiver will be attached to your SU board orgs as well, so you'll have an opportunity to see that in advance. And an opportunity right now for you to advise your reps as far as your desire to either submit the waiver or not, is the question before you.
I just had one question, tried to read through all the jargon, and there's some of it, Vaughn's point that this is a clear cut requirement of BSA sixteen to sixty-one, AA sixty-six, brother. What is it, or what specific point is it that we are wavering?
The point is that, that he's making is that we're required to have a teachers' associate collective bargaining agreement by law before we can transfer any personnel.
So if they're in a bargaining unit today, when they move, they need to be in the main hole by staying in a bargaining unit?
So they could possibly be moving to a separate bargaining unit as one, as one approach. Different districts are handling it differently, I should say, different supervisory unions, because it doesn't, at the district level. Some, some are already in a unified contract with their teachers, so this is not a difficult law for them to be in compliance with. That's not our case, so...
But I think, I've read all these documents, and it sounds to me like if they're, if they're part, if they're currently employed by CCSU, and you're moving them out of their districts into the CCSU rather than a district, they're still part of that bargaining unit, aren't they?
The problem would be, there's no language in that agreement currently that authorizes the superintendent to transfer staff based on... So that's the missing piece in our current contract.
And that would potentially give us three collective bargaining units, if that happened in our district, right? Right now we have two.
Well, we have three different contracts, one for Westbury, one for PC, and one for U forty-six. We also have two support staff.
That, I guess that's what I was thinking of, okay.
So that's five, so this could be six.
Seven.
Or seven, that's right, because additional support staff contracts could be...
You have unionized support staff coming into a non-unionized support staff employer.
And one of the decisions is whether to just move the teachers, and Joel Cook made a good argument about not moving the paraprofessionals as well.
Because we have contractability working.
Right, so, so we're gonna continue to explore those opportunities, but currently we don't have, we can't do this without a new collective bargaining agreement.
So in the next agreement, could the contract include everyone at the CCSU level?
So the next agreement, since this waiver, I mean, since our policy approach has been denied, we share that information with the association, so they're aware. And they were supportive way back in the beginning of this conversation with the white paper that Dr. Dewey wrote about, let's move everybody into SU. So there's still a need for us to figure out another approach. I would definitely recommend that we do send a waiver to see if we could move forward through a policy venue, and then move forward at the same time with this issue as part of our collective bargaining work.
What specific language does the waiver letter say? What is, what is its content?
It's about the ability for the superintendent to have authority to transfer, that's what's currently missing. And/or to have a separate negotiated agreement with two additional, or at least one additional bargaining unit.
But are we, we'd be asking the state not to be required to do this?
Right.
Or it will be required to enter a contract between the supervisory union and the support staff, as opposed to each individual district, right? Am I missing anything?
Because the SU will get certified staff for the first time, there's no certified staff.
Well, there's some, but it's minimum, like, our S is in there, but there's grant support for that. There's a few exceptions to it, but it's definitely not a group, there's just a few exceptions.
But currently in the post, that the other end of that contract is the staff, there's the staff, and the other end of that contract is the district, right? Each district. And that would be, regardless, that has to be the supervisory union, and supervisory board, that's...
That's correct.
So, yeah, so this all was...
It's complicated, and it's complex, you know, and it's something that...
And it may not yield any additional benefits.
Exactly.
Which is, I guess, what's towards the efficiency.
And it may have a negative consequence, so we have to approach it thoughtfully, and I think it's going to warrant further discussion about our approach. So that meeting where this is going to be discussed is really at the SU level, because it's the SU board's decision.
So, so for this topic, for this board, for this evening?
Correct.
You are asking U forty-six, please ask, please restate what you're, what you're looking for this board to act on this evening?
For this board to advise their supervisory union reps, which is Brian, Brian and Jack, as to the direction you would like them to move in on this question coming before them at the meeting, which is whether or not to submit a waiver based on the letter that we've received rejecting our policy slash procedural approach.
So, so in our org notes tonight, we've got that background information. I've heard Al request maybe what the waiver is that will be proposed at the CCSU board for, for U forty-six to review, and at least be able to advise those members who are on the CCSU board whether that's an acceptable approach or not. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's fair.
Any other discussion on this topic tonight?
The only concern I have is, if they're in a union now, and they get moved over, they're considered non-union.
No, they have to have a union.
They have another, you have to have another.
Another agreement, I should say.
Another agreement, but they would be in a non-union position for a time period.
They don't allow any transfer to occur before there is a negotiated agreement.
Oh, so they would be protected.
Yes, they won't move, we can't move anyone until we have a negotiated agreement.
So the waiver just buys you time, got it?
I assume we should open the waiver again?
Or the waiver can...
Or the state law.
If it's to her.
Right, and I, and I think, you know, I mean, at least at the SU level, I think, I need to understand a little bit better the cost of us going through a waiver process, which is undefined, and has not yet been acted upon by the secretary yet of any waiver that's been submitted to it.
That's correct.
What that cost is in comparison to the cost, you know, of what, you know, harking back to challenges for change, and the two hundred districts that didn't comply with that legislative mandate. So I, I think that there's a lot in balance here, I mean, there's no waiver, we'll be developing our own waiver.
Correct.
There's no waiver process for them to judge upon it.
Correct, so we don't, we don't know the criteria, they've yet to...
And they postponed the deadline at least once in the last legislative session.
Right.
So, is that, should, would that mean that an option would be to do nothing, just?
No, no, stay law.
But I mean, can we just hold off and see what happens, sort of thing?
Well, I think the risk in, in sending in a waiver without knowing what the criteria is certainly gives the people in the position to approve or deny a waiver the upper hand, because we don't...
Can't make your argument very sound.
Exactly, but we can explain why this approach could meet the need, and identify some of the inequities that are currently existing, and the fact that we have a history of shared service model. It's not, we already, our boards already know and have procedures in place to shared services, and probably we're unique from other supervisory unions in that we have that model, so...
It's come up twice, it's come up twice to me.
So what you just described would be the basic tenants of what the letter is that we... So I would suggest, for the purposes for this board, for this evening, for this topic, that we ask administration to take our suggestion, finish that letter if it's not finished already.
The waiver.
The waiver, the waiver request, distribute to the U forty-six members between now and September sixteenth. It looks like we're gonna meet on September sixteenth anyway for purposes of board visioning. We add one additional topic to the meeting that night, which is the waiver request review, which will, which will still give us enough time as a U forty-six board to give direction to CCSU board members who meet on September thirtieth. Because I don't think we have enough in front of us tonight for that, and I think there's value in seeing, seeing it on paper and documenting what our, what our position is.
Absolutely.
Good suggestion, because it really shows good faith on our part to explain our specific situation. And I'd use those words in the letter somehow, good faith response and request.
Response that we're required to make a good faith effort to comply.
Right.
Regardless of whether it was a secret waiver.
Right.
Well, if you're a secret waiver, you still need to make a good faith effort to comply.
Right, right, right. Right.
I can take that, absolutely, thank you for that direction.
Yeah, well, according to my rich watch, we are one minute ahead of schedule here for tonight, as we move to the consent agenda, consent agenda approving the, including the approval of warrants, which I know have been ratted around, the meeting minutes, which have been included in the org notes, the affirmation of the parent student handbook, the approval of the request for leave of absence, the approval for donation. Dewey, is there any need to pull any particular item on the consent agenda?
Did want to check up there, do you have a copy of our old professional appointments?
There were, there was...
One additional.
One additional, one that included, one that was part of the org notes.
Right.
So there's a total of two professional appointments for this evening, am I saying that correct?
Correct.
I thought that you had already approved one, and this is the new one. It was sent to you with additional materials, one of the board agenda reviews.
Yeah, this one was health.
It's the position for Hillary Araujo, for the point one two five health.
For the health teachers.
Correct.
Okay, I was, I was, yes, no, 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 I was confusing the request for leave of absence with the, with the professional appointment. So that's why I thought they were two, and there's one of each, so excuse me for being slightly confused there. So it's the request for leave of absence that was included in the org notes, and the professional appointment was set out as an amendment tonight. So that stated, any, any need to pull out any particular item? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed? Moved by Ryan?
Second.
Second by Al? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion for the consent, consent agenda passed six zero. Next item, agenda items that should be calendared for future board meetings. I actually, I have two, I have two from this evening, aside from, from our normal calendar review work that we would do. The motorcycle safety course issue was one that this, this board needs to review and address. And there's preparations for our vision, vision meeting on September sixteenth to now include a open session agenda item for the waiver request on the, that we just, that we just discussed, and direction for the CCSU reps from the forty-six. Is there anything else that should be calendared for future board? Is there anything else that should be calendared for future board meetings?
This is for November.
This is for November, correct?
We talked a while back about graduation requirements. And I thought that teachers were planning to come back somewhere in that timeframe. Because that's an important discussion.
I, I don't know, I, I don't, I do recall the graduation requirements discussion. I don't require if, I don't recall if we're willing to have... What the teacher's schedule was coming out of your education leadership teens were on this particular topic and what the timetable was for that.
There's a curriculum community that was working on proficiency-based graduation requirements, and I can include that information as far as their task.
Just say where it is. Give us an update.
And I, I think those are some of the topics that are great to broadly and widely engage our stakeholders in, which I'm sure would happen. But it's, you know, it's one of the roles I think the board can help with in engaging the community or business leaders as well, staffs.
Yeah.
I think that and if there's idea about, I know that you've mentioned that some of the, some of the interests to investigate our grading system may be not necessary because of a change in our, more wholesale change in the grading system. But again, I think, you know, that, that can't hurt from pretty broad and open and long discussion with stakeholders.
It'd be a huge shift going from the traditional Carnegie approach grading system using numbers or letters to proficiency-based, which is a, which is a natural way to tie in for our grad requirements at the same time.
It's a much smaller shift to move from a grading system that matches 98% of Vermont to, you know, the, the large shift might be long-term and take multiple years. It's a relatively short switch to be more in line. And I think there's some subtle benefits that could be voiced by scholarship awards and college admission counselors and others that could say that it would be a great benefit to the passive students if we changed their grading scale. I, I hate to be postponing that in hopes that we can have this huge shift from Carnegie because that one has so many factors outside of our control. But since we've decided our grading system, and it's internal, and it's by, we're different than everybody else, then that's something that seems to be seriously in our control. Where a change to proficiency is going to have to take some time to research with our, you know, the schools that, that our students go to, which is our...
So I guess, whatever you call consortium, I guess, these are the, these are the items that, that I hear from, from the community is, is really interested to help the evolution of Essex High in some of these conversations. And I guess I, I just really, I just want to put my interest out there that I don't want to get a presentation of what's been decided because I think the stakeholders can inform the decisions.
I don't think they're in a decision place at all. They're in a place of learning about how proficiency-based requirements work and how they can be constructed. So there's a lot of internal learning that's happening now within this. Well, Rob, you could probably speak to that better than me about your work at that.
Is the intention to, to leap to that room? Or can there be some discussion about where we stand right now?
Yeah, discussion.
How can we, how can we as a board help, how can we help with that, that discussion of where we are?
What we have stayed on the ratings to be part of.
Okay.
And using your position as leveraging communication. Since you've ultimately set the policy.
I don't, is the grading of policy on type of grad requirements...
Okay.
Yeah. I'm particularly interested in the math, the science, STEM, algebra requirement because, you know, they're, they're thinking about making these statewide requirements. And that's why I keep asking, like, well, where are we? Because they could come down and make a decision.
They could. That's a case well captured section.
Yeah. And that, the August 8th article that I just gave, Jack, really makes the case that if we're given state technology and science today, students need to be prepared with higher math skills. And they're not part, I don't know where they are now, part of our graduation requirements. But we've heard some feedback that computer applications, computers need to be, that students need, if they don't know how to use a computer, that's one thing. But to know where the applications are and how to leverage applications so that they can be more effective and efficient, those are critical courses. If we can do anything in those areas, those are the areas I'm interested in going there.
There's right time, common core math.
Yeah.
And next-gen science standards, which were just adopted over the summer. So math teachers have done a great job aligning Algebra I and Geometry. That's a first step. And the science teachers are just barely meeting for the first time to wrap their arms around what 912 is going to look like with the next-gen science standards. So it's going to get to where you want to be, but it's a timely process to realign for it.
I understand.
The next-gen science standards were just approved by the state last month. So it's hard to talk about what proficiency-based requirements will look like until the teachers have an opportunity to understand the standards and requirements.
Okay. That's good.
Okay. Any other topics that should be calendared for future board meetings? Again, our future board, our next board meeting is in November. I don't have it exacted, but...
We'd have the 40, the usual, I think at that point in time, we'd have...
October 1, how?
Yeah. And then I think it would probably, it might be too early, but it would be close to the time that enrollment or injections would probably be like a separate.
We could get it, depending on the board.
I can give you school choice numbers too, because we'll have those. I mean, we have what's, what's in the system, but actually who shows up is a good story. Like what's...
Different application process next year? Or is it that, as far as people coming and applying to open positions? You have really tight timelines.
Yeah. Well, I take it that it'll be, well, it's going to be better known by families. That's the one thing. I got a call today. I'm on the opportunity to apply.
We're not really getting missions?
Not this year. But I think there was misunderstanding of the timing.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I was, we have a meeting in November, and I didn't know if we had one in December or not. Thinking that we didn't have one in December. If we didn't have one in December, it would have been time for the board to pick out that as to the administration of budget of government. You know, I mean, we're already... Which is starting this year, but it's, you know, it's not too, too far into this future. We don't have to start.
So other than your special meeting that you've just identified tonight for September 16th, your next regular board meeting is October 21st. So that's the meeting that we're talking about as far as future...
October 21st, future.
Jack, are there special board needs for the open house tables, locations?
We have not discussed that.
Okay.
I'm, but I'm willing to entertain that tonight because open house is happening between tonight and our next board meeting, right? I think this past, the past year, we did not do anything, anything special for...
Correct.
And, and I got no feedback, and I don't know if any of our board members did either from the community, so that was a option that was missed by the community by not having board members there. I, I think an approach should be like what we did last year is, is there's no need for a formal table or a presence there.
It's going to be great.
I mean, yeah. Again, nothing more than perhaps, because you do an introduction in the auditorium, right? Before, before, and that, that board members could be recognized and made available, but, and made available for discussions. But I don't think there's anything more than that that we have here. But that's one board member's view. I don't know what other board members feel about that.
I think you're right.
Okay.
No, we did have the table. It wasn't...
Yeah, it wasn't well... We didn't do a lot of...
Table.
Yeah. Right.
Do we, I forget, do we have name tags last year?
Yeah.
We did.
We did. We did.
I was just going to say, we could just make sure to have a nice name tag.
Actually, CTE agreed today to create some really nice name tags for you. Actually, our odd boys...
Okay. Anything else for future, future items? A quick, quick question for the board before we go into executive session is, a question I, a topic I heard raised earlier tonight is what worked in tonight's meeting and what didn't work in tonight's meeting?
It's true.
Any, any quick comments on that? I know this is a, through a new minister question, and she does, because he didn't have the chance to ponder this or know that...
The only, the only item I got caught off guard on was the, the career center because it's such an important topic. If I'd have known that was coming, I would have certainly asked to be put on the agenda. I mean, I, but I had a chance to ask as I was figuring out, so...
But I think it can be, I mean, we're still in the middle of the conversation stage. So it might have been a little bit...
But that's okay. I mean, you know, start to get feedback. Even if it's 10 minutes, five minutes for the board, at least everyone, it's on everyone's radar. You get some awareness before the meeting starts. You can even ask a few questions before, so... But that was the one that kind of caught me off guard. The other one had to do with comparing our scores back to the state. You know, Judy, with all of the infrastructure that's now being put in place, fiber throughout the state, I cannot imagine why DOE is not leveraging that technology in the classrooms throughout the state. It, I don't, when I think about those state scores, it's like, what a disaster. What are we doing? Why isn't anyone taking ownership to this? But one suggestion that I had for the, maybe your superintendent's meeting would be to push for the leveraging of technology in all schools throughout Vermont. Maybe even, the secondary thought was, maybe there needs to be a recommendation to put laptops in every classroom where a child to start using this technology. Just a thought.
Anything else? What worked, what didn't work tonight? Hearing none, I want to move into executive session for this collective bargaining discussion. All right, TM, thank you very much. We're done for this evening. And everyone have a good evening.